Good afternoon. I want to call our committee of the whole meeting to order. My name is John Young. Sheila, can you start us off with a roll call?
Mr. Furman, he is in route, so you know.
Okay.
Dr. Giles. Pastor Jones. Dr. Guadalupe is not able to attend in person today. Ms. Woodruff.
Here.
Dr. Hans. Ms. Newman.
Here.
Ms. Root.
Here.
Ms. May. Mr. Smith is also not able to attend.
I am online.
I am online.
Oh, he is online.
Okay.
I am present.
And Mr. Young.
I'm here. I think Mr. Cowan was hoping to be at the ballgame, but no prevent.
So right now, we do have...
Adam is here.
Okay, so now we have a quorum for the Finance Committee. So we have quorum on both committees, so we're good.
Yep, thank you. Okay, our first opportunity for public comments. Can we check, is anyone online? Nope, okay. Anyone in the room wish to speak? If not, there will be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. Oh, there is? Oh, yeah, that's, okay.
John, it's Sarah Guadalupe. I just wanted you to know I'm logged in. Due to illness, I couldn't be there in person, but I'm listening remotely.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Sarah. Okay, uh, can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
So move, support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, any discussion? If not, by voice, vote, all in favor, by aye, aye? Any opposed? We have an agenda. Uh, first item up for the Finance Committee is our financial update. Yeah, February 2025 financial update, Robert.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very terrific. So I'm gonna go through the PowerPoint. And we'll start off with the first slide, which is our monthly payment trends, our revenue. And what I want to point out slash remind the committee of is that the purpose of this form really is to demonstrate the trend in our revenue. And we'll look through that for the period from October through February. And you can see that generally, the trend is down. And I can't see the, like, the screen from where I'm, from my virtual setting. So I'm hoping that the amounts are over the bar charts, which is something that I added. So are there amounts over those bar charts? Okay, great. Thank you, John.
Yeah.
And you can see that we're starting off in October with about $34 million. It drops to about 33.6, and by the time we get to February, it's about 32.3 million. That's just a general downward trend.
Actually, are we lined up? I'm seeing, or this is slides, is that right? I don't see the revenue and eligible slides.
Yep.
We got two different decks going here.
Do you see those in your packet, the revenue slot?
Yeah.
Okay, because the PowerPoint that was provided to us doesn't have it.
Okay, all right. So I would just be able to talk in more detail on the revenue side since we're three, we're on technically slide number three, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking back. Okay, so, uh... That's very odd. I apologize. Yeah, I'm seeing the PowerPoint that you have, and it apparently doesn't have the revenue and eligible slide. So those, yeah, the revenue trend is down, as is the eligible's trend. And so I'm gonna transition to the assets comparison. See that if we look at our cash and our receivables together, they're fairly consistent. Our cash in the current period is actually up, and our receivables are down. And that's pretty, that is what you would expect if we're collecting our receivables sooner, then that's how those two balances would, uh, would show up. In total, our overall assets are fairly consistent. We're down a little bit. If we go to the next slide and we look at our liabilities comparison, you can see that our overall vendor payables are up by about $10 million. And that's predominantly when we talk about vendor payables, payables to our providers. We've brought the amount due to the state down pretty significantly, and the rest of our liabilities are fairly consistent. And then our net position, we're showing just north of an $8 million deficit that we've paid out for services that exceed what we were, what we were able to take in. The next slide shows a comparison year over year of our revenue. And you can see that while the trend is down overall, our revenue is up pretty significantly relative to last year, near $20 million. But also, if we transition to the expenses comparison, our expenses are up also more significantly. One thing that I did want to point out is that if you look at our administrative costs, they are up by about $1.2 million. And some of that relates to our transitioning of some of the FMS services internally. We're building out the capacity to manage that. And then the next slide on our net income comparison, you can see our consolidated revenue and expense numbers and the $8.2 million deficit that we've incurred to this point. And then the next slide just gives an overview of our top 15 providers. We're anticipating in the next month or two that we present to the board that the Mork and Easter Seals numbers will be consolidated with their merger. And then the next to last slide just goes through more details on those top 15 providers. And at this stage, I'll ask if there's any questions.
All right, any questions from Finance Committee members? None. Any questions from Policy Committee members? Oh, yes. Christina.
I'm just curious if you can remind me where we projected to be with our net income at this point of the year?
Sure, let me take a look at that real quick. At the, at the end of the year was a question?
No, at this point that you're presenting. So the February date and the $8 million deficit? Is that what we were projecting for this point?
We were projecting a $12.4 million deficit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for clarifications. This one may take some historical perspective, so maybe this is for you, Dana. On the amount due to the state on payables, 7.7 seemed high, 3.6 seems low or reasonable. Was 7.7 last year abnormally high? And I mean, if we don't know the exact answer now, just if we could know that for the board meeting. Okay? All right, cool. Thank you. So on the, well, we'll get in, you're gonna do the statements next, right?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, this is a clarification question. On the net income, the 8.2 is total year-to-date from October 1st through February 28th, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, if there are no other questions, let's move on to the statements.
So I don't see the statements in the, in the packet. Were those provided outside of the, the slides? But when I'm looking at the slides that I can see, I just want to make sure that the, that the committee has those.
They're in Bor, I'm looking at them from Boardable, so...
I can see what was provided, the Boardable has that, but the PowerPoint that was provided to us does not.
Right. So maybe let's just, I'll zero in on my question. Within operating revenue, obviously Medicaid is the substantially dominant, but some categories are up quite a bit, like the CCBHC, and a couple are down a bit. Can you maybe speak to where we're at within some of the operating revenue categories?
Sure. So, yeah, if, if you look at the year-to-date and the prior year comparisons, you can see that our Medicaid is up, our Healthy Michigan is up a little bit, and the CCBHC is up significantly. And there has been push to get people enrolled in the CCBHC. And we, in that regard, just serve as a pass-through. So we get the CCBHC money based on the T-1040s, and then we pass that money through. So that doesn't really affect our, our bottom line as much because of how we manage it, I guess, because of what we, they're not a provider per se. We're just acting as a fiduciary for the distribution of the funds.
Okay.
I don't know if...
Go ahead. Well, yeah, just more for clarification for those who are looking at the packet. And then on the operating expense side, it looks like mental health, IDD services are where we've had the biggest change. Am I reading that correctly?
Definitely. Definitely. Yeah, and part of our, our work currently is to ensure that we understand our, our general fund expenditures. Because when we look at our bottom line, the majority of the challenges that we're experiencing are in that, in that category. It's in general fund. And we, we've established a work group to help manage that, and we've done some analysis. We're looking at everything from how to prioritize services to people who are not Medicaid-eligible to ensuring that all of the payments that are hitting our general fund are necessary and, and, and that we're managing those appropriately.
Okay. All right, any other questions from any board members? Good. Okay, oh, yep, go ahead.
Under CCBHC settlement, is that some money from like a previous year?
I'm not sure. I'm gonna have to look into that question. That, that seems like a reasonable answer, but I don't know. I'm gonna have to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
And I will.
Could address that at the board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, um, if no further questions, Robert, thank you. We will move on to contractual obligations, over $100,000. Suzanne, I think you have our presentation for tonight.
Can I get a recommendation to move to the full board for the...
Oh, even for review files?
Yep.
Okay, all right. I need one of the Finance Committee members to make the motion to recommend.
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any other questions? Sheila, we need a roll call for that.
Dr. Giles.
Yes.
Pastor Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, now, I'm sorry about that, all right.
No worries.
Thank you so much. I think we can move to the next slide. And I've asked Chris to join as well, because Chris was partner in crime on our work group that met to look at the RFPs for our new website contract. And we're pleased to present you with our new website vendor, our hopeful new website vendor, which is SS Digital Media. They're actually in the neighborhood. They're just down the road in Troy. And they, this would be a new website contract. We're very excited about it. They're very energetic. I think they have a lot of great innovative ideas to revamp the website a little bit so we can create more enhanced digital presence, improve our accessibility. That was another big, important feature that we had talked about extensively with this vendor and multiple vendors in terms of ensuring that we have accessibility for our website, as well as having a little bit more of a modern design and that it's more intuitive for people to be able to utilize its functionality and really research the items that they needed. Another piece of it that we're really excited about is enhancements to our provider directory. So it'll be an enhanced search capability for our provider directory, as well as some functionality with our training, registering for training and that functionality. So we're really excited about the new vendor. The proposed amount would be $115,453 and some change. And this would be, we, the contract, as you can see, would begin in May. We would hope to have a new website by fall. And then the contract would go through September of 2027.
And I won't bore you with any of the technical things, but I grilled this new company on all of the security side of things, making sure that, you know, it was what we needed from a security standpoint, as well as, I've never seen someone pick up an RFP, and I've been on a lot of RFP processes, and go as far as they did. You know, they basically went ahead and developed some things knowing that we were going to potentially want to see that from a bidder and presented that to us where others didn't. So it was really nice to see that.
Questions from Finance Committee? Adam, I see your hand.
Yep. I, I know I'm gonna be shocked by this response because my timeline post-COVID is all messed up. But when was the website last relaunched? In terms of the redesign?
So we had a three-year contract, so it was three years ago.
Okay.
And we did extend it a little bit, just because there's some overlap between the two. We have an overlap with this, the contract that we have now and this new contract, so there'll be just a little bit of overlap, but it was three years ago.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from Committee, from Policy Committee members?
Oh.
You're hiding Malika.
I'm sorry. Can you tell us why it's a discrepancy between the not-to-exceed amount and the total cost?
Yep. Leave it at the 10% contingency, just in case we needed to do that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Took one of my questions, which was good. So the contract we expected to be is 104 and change, but for our internal budgeting, it's 115? Okay.
Correct, adding that 10% contingency, yes.
Okay, well, okay, all right. But now they know they have 10%, they can run over, but that's okay. When you mentioned accessibility, is that like the ADA part of it? So they'll handle remediation, or is that still our responsibility? So like PDFs, and people like to put giant documents on there, and then screen readers can't really read those very well?
They actually talked to us at length about some of that accessibility, and they have some very unique ideas in terms of how we can have our PDF documents be a little bit more accessible. So we are gonna be working with them to have that be more of, in the way that we also describe them when they're posted on the website, but also in terms of that readability. That was something that they really wanted to work towards to make it a little bit more usable for, for our website.
So they'll be consulting, or they'll be actually helping to do, or...
They'll help us to do that. And, and when we're doing the design phase, when we're bringing over any of our documents and any of our materials, they'll be helping us in terms of designing that in the beginning. And then we'll also have them as far as some maintenance when we need to move forward and if they're, we need any assistance or anything like that with those types of, those accessibility products.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Okay, any other questions? If not, can I get a motion to recommend, this goes to the full board? Support? Motion and support. Any further discussion? If not, Sheila, can I get a roll call?
Pastor Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Furman.
Yes.
Dr. Giles.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll see you next week. At this point, I will turn it over to the Policy Management Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Um, quarterly update from the needs assessment outcome. Frances Carley and Tricia Zimboa.
Good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon. Frances and I are excited to share with you our data results from our needs assessment that we have been working on. So if we can move to the next slide. Next slide, please. So just as a reminder for some of you, why we do a yearly needs assessment. So this year is unique as it runs with our three-year strategic plan, but we do the annual needs assessment each year that helps drive our annual plans and using the data from the individuals that we serve, from the board members, from our staff, from our providers, to really move us forward on what it is that we are working on here. This helps determine any gaps between a current or desired outcome. And again, that feedback is really vital. And so if you go to the next slide. We had some target questions this year. We focused, and we do this every year, and it changes with what the key areas is. But this, this year, the key areas were the crisis continuum and then our justice initiative. We also had additional questions based around assistive technology, self-determination, spend-down, and a few other things that Frances will get into with some of the data. Next slide. So based on feedback from prior years, we did make some improvements this year, both from feedback from the board and then from individuals that we serve. We had two survey options. We had a short and a long option along with a more friendlier version for the individuals that we serve. So we go out in person, and we'll get into a little bit of the outreach. We go out in person for the people that we serve to get their feedback. And so based on some of that, what we've heard in the past, we use some emojis. So it was happy, unhappy. We got thumbs up, we got thumbs down in order to better elicit that feedback. And then we also translated both the short and the long survey into Spanish and Arabic along with other languages as requested. Next slide. So we focus both on electronic outreach. We have more than 10,000 individuals in our constant contact. We would send out those emails frequently, so hopefully you saw them. We shared them with our partners over at the County Health Division who have more than 100,000 contacts. And they shared it through their GovDelivery system. It was included in our newsletters and press releases and social media, as well as we took our show on the road, and we went in person. We mailed out our stepping stones, which I believe reaches over 1,700 served. I can go back and tell you that our social media posts reached more than 8,000 individuals. Our press release reached close to 4,000. And then again, our list served was over 10,000. We mailed the surveys also out to more than 400 service sites, including all of our specialized residential sites. It was disseminated at multiple events, along with presentations at the service sites and work groups, and we had them here in our lobby. We had flyers and QR codes attached to our presentations and to our trainings, all of our recipient rights trainings. And we presented to the best work group, Strategic Planning Peer Work Group, our Supported Decision-Making Work Group, and our Empowerment Group. Next slide. So in addition, our sites that we visited was New Gateways, Clubhouse Inspiration, Dreams Unlimited, Comfort Zone, Turning Point, Meridian, both the men's and women's Waterford Unit, and Sacred Heart. And with that, I'll pause if there's any outreach questions, but then we'll turn it over to Frances to get into the actual numbers.
Any questions? Just curious, in terms of the QR codes, how many, what percentage do you think you got from QR codes?
That's a great question. I will find that answer for you. Because I'm not sure.
All right, thank you.
I could say that the majority of responses that we received from people receiving services was from those hard copies that were either mailed out and returned to us at the, from the service sites or from our in-person presentations. So that was the vast majority for the individuals served. Okay, next slide. So in terms of the numbers, you know, we're really happy to report that the majority of respondents, again, this year, as in the past couple of years, the majority of responses were from people receiving services. So we received 374 responses. That's an increase of 1% over last year. And it's the highest number of responses that we've received from people receiving services, at least back, going back to FY '23 for the, that survey year. But we had 823 total responses, which is just a slight decrease from last year, which was at 837. That still reflects an overall increase of 55% for the total number of people reached since FY '23. And so it's been a very targeted and successful outreach campaign to increase those numbers. And, you know, we continue to try different methods, new ways to reach people. And, you know, we continue to try different methods, new ways to reach people. I think we've really seen a lot of progress that way and we are going to continue to work on that and find new strategies in the upcoming years. One notable change, a lot of the responses remain the same, but we did have a more significant increase from responses from law enforcement over last year, about 183%, so 17 responses this year. Next slide. So, this shows, the slide shows the total population distribution for the respondents. We broke it down for people receiving services, family, friends, direct service professionals, advocates, hospital employees, school staff, law enforcement, legislative and elected officials, network providers, community members, board members, and OCHN employees. And most of the responses were about the same as last year. It was, in terms of the distribution, for example, the DSPs, we had 142 responses this year. Last year, it was 140. So, there really wasn't very much of a shift. I think the largest change was from the community members. We had 42 responses last year and 65 this year. Next slide. So, in terms of the areas for service satisfaction from individuals served, we had some changes, actually, from the distribution. And I wonder, I'm wondering if that is really from the individuals, their primary or maybe secondary service that they receive. We did go out to more SUD treatment sites and we were collecting data from more sites. Typically, in the past, we have received, I think, more responses from individuals with ADD. And so, we had more responses from people receiving veterans services and integrated healthcare. And we had more responses regarding, well, an increased satisfaction rate for case management, transportation, crisis services, and then also, mental health treatment remained about the same. But our veterans services went from 87% to 95%. And the integrated healthcare, there was just a slight change, 2% increase from last year. In terms of the service priorities, so, people were, I think, this year, more on the same page with one another in terms of what the priorities were. So, the areas that got highest ranking, so it was high priority, medium priority, or low priority for each of the service areas. And this year, mental health treatment had, was ranked highest priority for 83% of the respondents. Last year, it was 73%. Crisis intervention, 77% this year. It was 67% last year. Services for children and families, 74% this year. It was 57% last year. And integrated healthcare, 71% this year, 64% last year. Support for caregivers and SUD treatment were similar to last year's responses. All right, and then, next slide. So, some of our focus areas, one question, one thing we wanted to know with all of the changes with transportation and some of our move with the, with standardizing rates and changing some of the structure of the operations that way, what the satisfaction rate was in terms of individuals' experiences with those changes in service. And most people did not detect a change in their services. So, that was 51% of the respondents. 42% then said that they were happy with the changes that they had experienced or detected. And we did have 24 individuals who reported that they were not happy with the change in services. So, we will be looking a little bit more closely at any kind of qualitative statements and feedback that people may have noted in their survey responses to see, to address those concerns. In terms of crisis services, we asked if, we were trying to detect what people's experiences with the crisis system in Oakland County is. And we received responses from over 350, 60 people if they had tried to obtain crisis services for anyone at an emergency department. And 84% said no, 15% said yes. Four individuals had tried to obtain service, but they were turned away. That was their experience. And then also, we asked if anyone had tried to obtain these services at the RCC specifically. There was a similar response rate, fewer individuals, due to the branching, there were fewer responses to that question. And individuals who tried to receive services at the RCC, it was 26 individuals said yes, that they had tried to and that they had tried but were turned away. There were three people. So, then in terms of justice services, and Trish, I don't know if you want to jump in on that at all, but, you know, we were really happy to see the response from the community that they are prioritizing all the work that OCHN is doing with the justice services. And 93% of respondents said that yes, they agree that providing services instead of going to jail is important. 80% of individuals responded affirmatively that they know what threat assessment means and are familiar with that term. And that has something to do with the outreach and raising the profile of these programs. And then also, individuals, 96% of individuals said that they would like to support programs that would determine if someone is a threat to themselves or others. All right, and then we also asked about the Medicaid spend down. There were, so this question was part of the longer, more detailed survey for individuals receiving services that was available online. It was not included in the survey, the shorter survey that was mailed out to the service sites. But in terms of, so the responses that we got back for the more detailed survey, out of those respondents, 17% of individuals said that they have a Medicaid spend down. And we also are interested in exploring options for assistive technology, trying to determine what would be useful to the community, what people would be interested in. And so, just off from the qualitative responses that people filled out in the survey, some of the things that they enlisted that would be helpful include some kind of software assistance platform that would help with digital paperwork, a communication board, echo sound. People also mentioned Alexis specifically for reminders and also other communication and coordination, an emergency contact device that is wearable, spelling assistance service, exercise equipment for people who have Parkinson's specifically, budgeting tools, which could be part of the paperwork assistance, and other smart home devices to help managing home. And we also included, as we did last year, a question to determine what the, so the social determinants of health, SDOH, these concerns are really about the services, resources that are available to people that help them just with day-to-day life and those kinds of supports. And so, we asked if they were more, what they were most concerned about having access to and if, you know, what they may have felt was more at risk or were concerned about losing potentially or not having access to it. So, the numbers actually, the concentration of the numbers actually went down this year. So, for medical care medications, 25% of people were concerned about having access. Last year, that was 38%. This year, 25% of people were concerned about transportation. Last year, it was 31%. And similarly, for housing, it was 31% last year, 24% this year. Food was 32% last year, 22% this year. And then 53% of people were not concerned with any of the items that were listed. All right, and so then, next slide. So, in terms of the next steps for the needs assessment, we're distributing the report to the chief leadership, the directors, board of directors. And you should have the report, the full report in the board packet. We have several strategy planning meetings scheduled. And so, we'll be looking at this information and building that into our FY '26, '28 strategic plan, which we'll have ready by midsummer to present to the board and to continue those conversations and work with the board to approve that vision for the next three years. And we will also be using this, the survey results to build out the annual plan, which we'll have at the end of the summer. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions?
Yes.
Does anyone on the policy committee have any questions? Ms. Newman?
I had a couple of questions. The first one was about the transportation. I was surprised to see that people were satisfied with the, with the change. So, that was good to see. But I'm just wondering if we shouldn't do a little deeper dive there because it's so, it's a critical component to what we do and we want to make sure that nobody's getting left behind. That wasn't a question, I'm sorry.
Well, I do have a couple of questions.
Can I follow up with that?
Yeah, we can respond.
Yeah, we are holding stakeholder and provider meetings and with individuals served as well to make sure that that's happening. We've held at least one since the transition happened. We plan to hold up follow-up meetings since the transition. But right now, we're not hearing any, anybody left on a list that doesn't have an authorized transportation that correlates with the service offer.
Thanks, Sheila.
Yep. And we do have a transportation manager who is dedicated to that role. And she's really great. She's working with the providers, working with individuals receiving services and diving into the other service areas as well to try to make sure that the network is meeting the full need.
I was really glad to see that most people were satisfied. But I just wondered if it was anybody that's fallen through the cracks, which leads me to my question about crisis. Because the people who answered the question are people who are receiving services. We have no way of capturing people who tried to get in and didn't. I don't know what we can do about that, but it's, this is concerning to me because I've been in situations where I've personally gone with people and they had difficulties, or people called me because they had difficulties. So, I know that that's something that's still, I'm not sure how we can address that if they're not in the system. But those are the ones we really need to get to because they were the ones that couldn't get in. And then, I guess that wasn't a question either.
Well, and Milkaya, I can add too.
You're out of rolls today.
Well, I'm on a roll.
That, that question did specifically ask if they had been turned away. So, we can double check with the branching to make sure that even if somebody filled it out as a family, a friend, or a community member, that they were able to see that question. So, we can look into that as well for you.
Okay, because that, when somebody's in crisis, they're in crisis. And we need to be able to service them, which we all know. And then I had a question about the spend down. Was there any attempt to go a little bit deeper with that? Some people, if they didn't know they had one, they probably didn't have one. But the ones that did, I wonder if they were having difficulty meeting the spend down month after month. And was that a consideration?
And I can speak to that a little. So, we did ask a couple more follow-up questions about the spend down. We did not get very many responses to the question. And so, it is included in the report, that data. But it was, there were, there were few responses. So, it was, you know, I wanted to focus on more of the highlights with the slides and, but the more detailed information is in the report.
It may be something we need to circle back around to because I know people who have spend downs who struggle to meet them every month.
I will also add, it did come up, I got the pleasure of doing a lot of the in-person ones along with Frances and Suzanne and Christine and team. But it did come up when I presented at CNS and other places.
Right, right.
Spend down concern from our provider staff for individuals is actually where it came up, you know, qualitatively in that aspect as well. So, we do have a work group that specifically focuses internally here on spend down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I do have one question. Do you think the short survey made a difference in the outcomes? Because a lot of the comments seem more positive.
I want to say yes and no. But I also think we were able to sit down individually with individuals. So, depending on whether it came from a family member, an advocate, or the individual, I think there's still some tweaking I'd like to do because as we were in person and we would sit down with individuals, you want to make sure you're asking the questions and interacting with them when you're not leading them. And so, we're very cognizant of that, why we're out doing that as well. But also, having them be able to provide their, their feedback. But a lot of times, we were at clubhouses and we were at, you know, vocational programs, which most of the individuals who are there love to go there as well, right? And so, I had gone out to Gesher and we got to go to New Gateways and that. And so, I would like to see some of those numbers increase. We did get a large stack, you know, I'll give a shout out to New Gateways and Lynn over there. They did get a large stack back from families. So, we also had the individuals, but they were also working with us too to get it from the individuals' families and their guardians and their advocates as well. So, we were able to use that together with what we got from the individuals served.
And then also, this time last year, you know, things were unknown. We were ending a lot of things in terms of Medicaid and all of that. So, people had a lot of different worries at that point as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, the climate has changed in a year.
Yeah, and I, I know I have some ideas of how we can increase some of those numbers when we've seen the list. Top priority is increasing it, you know, amongst our board, amongst our staff. But really looking at those individuals served and making sure that those family members as well, that their voice is heard as well as- that those family members as well, that their voice is heard as well as the individuals served too.
Got you. Any other questions?
Just have a comment, not a question. Yeah, it's very important, especially for the intellectual and developmental disability population because most of them will need a one-on-one to be able to complete a survey like this. And for them, I think it has to be even more comprehensive because of the nature of their disability. So let us know, we'd like to hear what kind of solutions or ideas you've come up with. Thank you.
Mr. Cowan?
Okay, thank you. First, I always find these surveys informative. So there's a lot of data here, a lot of information, but this has to translate into action. I appreciate the fact that you're going to come with a plan or a draft plan in the midsummer, but I think the board, I think we'd like to have a little bit more collaboration on this, okay? That's my sense from past comments that people have made. So is it possible, maybe at one of the, maybe May study session, what do you see from this, you know, what you've received that we have to change? And it doesn't have to be anything super elaborate. It's kind of like bullet points of what could we address based on the findings that came out? And then also, you know, we have to talk about what's practical, what can we do. I see there's some information on, you know, housing shortage. Well, we can't do anything about that, but we could do something about transportation and things like that. So I think this is... It's good, but I'm trying to see... I was looking for, well, what, even preliminary, what comes out of this that we can do? So I think the board, if at an upcoming study session, we could talk about this a little bit before you get into your whole plan and then come to us, and there's no real collaboration on it. I think we... Almost like a SCOL session, you know, where we're going through it and talking about different ideas that we have with you and that you have, and kind of see what works for this plan, a strategic plan going forward, okay?
Absolutely. I think, and I'm going to look at Sheila, I think we are on for a study session coming up. Oh.
In what?
Well, no, I thought we were on... Maybe it was June, but...
That was, I think, what the Council was telling us.
Is before we get to that plan.
And then comes June, the board collecting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Could we do May?
Yeah.
Needs assessment collaboration for June, June, and then comes June, you'll have the specific year of annual panic receiving planning update.
Okay. Okay. That's perfect.
And I think we'd be able to bring...
All right. I mean, if anybody else has any ideas on that, but that's kind of my thought based on past, you know, practice. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Going along with that suggestion, would it be too much trouble for us to receive a copy of the qualitative data that was collected? Because for me, I feel like that helps with asking questions and coming up with ideas. I don't know, is it like a huge...
I will tell you from the in-person, it was... We were having conversation and that, but I believe there was qualitative comments in the online survey.
Okay. Awesome. That would be really helpful, if that's possible. Thank you.
Ms. Newman?
I don't hear anything about children's crisis, their satisfaction with families in terms of accessing services for children in crisis. I know there was a sticky widget.
Yeah, there were very few people who responded who accessed the children's crisis. I want to go back to make sure I provide correct information. So family members, there were eight families, and let me see, they did not need any inpatient care, and in terms of satisfaction, I would have to go back and compile that, extract that from the specific individuals, what they said about the crisis. I'll do that.
And you said you only had eight families that responded?
That responded affirmatively, that they had a child or a family member in crisis.
Okay.
But we had over, I think we had 56 responses total from people in the community and others who tried to obtain crisis services from... For individuals, whether it's friends, family, other people that they were helping, or maybe it was through school or law enforcement. So, yeah, but only eight specifically for the children's services under 18.
It's really concerning to me because I know that that's one of the reasons why they ended up suing the state and having to reorganize children's services because children were being left in ERs in different places. So for us to only get eight responses, that I don't know that we had improved that much since last year with children in crisis.
Well, I think it's the number of people who actually had that crisis. So let me just double-check the number of families. So 53 families, friends of people receiving services responded to the survey in general. But of those, only eight actually did have somebody, a child under 18, in crisis. So it's just the... That was the need within that group, that group of 50, so...
And that might be something we want to prioritize next year for outreach, working with our...
Children's.
With Kim over in our clinical services and CLIA and New Oakland, that we could focus on that and even work with New Oakland. And they may have data of their own as well, so we can follow up with that.
Well, thank you, but I just hope that we are hitting the mark with the kids because it's been an issue. Thank you.
Dr. Giles?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand. I keep reading it, I want to make sure I got it right. So the difference between the longer version and the shorter version is questions about crisis services and justice, right?
And some other questions as well. We had some questions about stigma and, I believe, the spend-down.
Okay. And so with that, the shorter version had questions about crisis as well, correct?
We did not include crisis with the shorter version.
So only 18 people who completed the longer version had the opportunity to answer questions about crisis?
Well, there is a general... There were general questions for everybody in the community to respond to. So... But with that shorter version that went out, it did not include the crisis services. We edit that back based on our experiences providing that survey in the field. And in the past, we did have the longer survey, and, you know, we would sit down with the individuals, and it was very much a very intensive one-on-one kind of experience. And the feedback that we got from the providers and DSPs was really, you know, this really isn't working, and we needed to adjust, and so that's what we did from there.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, maybe we swung too far to the other side, and we should include some additional questions next year, but it's... Yeah, we're trying to find the right balance to get the information. That's always the challenge, I think, is trying to get with data, I think, in general, is that you want to get as much information as you can, but then you need to balance that with the burden of collecting the data too.
Right.
And so that's, you know, what we're trying to balance.
Okay. So that, I was just making sure... So we do have a small number of people responding about crisis. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none. Thank you, ladies. Sheila, this would just be a receiving file, right? Okay, thank you. Next, we have recipient rights, appointments, recommendations by Ms. Vicky Suter.
Good evening. Recipient Rights Advisory Committee met last week, and we did interview for our two vacant positions. We had two applicants, and unanimously, the RAC Committee wants to recommend the two candidates, which is Diane Sanzalone and Melanie Hager-Coffer. So I had to... She got married between application and interview time, so...
I saw that.
So we had to account for that. I've known Diane for a long time. She is a fierce advocate. She has been a member of the Common Ground CAC, as well as Easter Seals CAC, our CAC, and a number of our other work groups. She has advocated for individuals both related to mental health and with disability. And Melanie is newer to our services here in Michigan, but she is a person with lived experience. She is a certified peer. You know, she really talked about her personal experiences and how she advocates and connects with folks that are served by the public mental health system and really wants to be more involved in rights so she could advocate more. So the committee recommended that both individuals get appointed to the RAC Committee. I will state that we are going to have another vacancy at the end of May, and that will be a community member at large position. So if you know of anyone that has an interest in being on our RAC Committee, please have them to fill out an application because we do need to fill that position.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Policy Committee, any questions? Ms. Newman?
Just to be on the safe side, with Ms. Hager-Coffer, she's employed with CNS as well, should I recuse myself from that vote because of it?
Yes.
Thank you.
The first application that we would be considering is Diane Salzon. Is there a motion? Any additional questions of Ms. Vicker, of Vicky? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call? Sheila?
Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. The second applicant was Melanie Hager-Coffer. Is there a motion?
Show more.
It's been properly moved and supported. Any additional questions before we take the vote? Hearing none. Sheila, can you do the roll call?
Mm-hmm. Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So this will go to the full board on next week.
Thank you.
They looked very qualified.
We're very excited about our applicants.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the policy portion of the meeting.
Thank you.
Hand it back over to you, John.
Thank you. Thank you. Item four, under Other Business Events Outreach. Suzanne, back up.
Hello again, everyone. Just to give you a little overview of what we've had going on in April, what's coming and what we have coming in May, we've spent some time at OU lately. We had our Behavioral Health Job Expo and Resource Event last week at Oakland University. It was a great event. We had about 30 to 40 people come through. It was wonderful. There were a lot of students there who are potential graduates, they're graduating soon, and they were able to interview and get some information about different resources. So it was a phenomenal event. It was our second annual, so we hope to continue that in the future. Last year, we held it in the fall. We tried it this year in the spring because a lot of students are graduating and looking for jobs, so it felt like a good time to be there. So it worked out really well. We also have some training coming up, some training, there are additional trainings that are listed as well. We had a new co-responder who attended the Wickham City Council Meeting to be introduced last week as well, and I attended that out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk yesterday at Oakland University. It was a nice event. It was a little crisp, but it was sunny day. We had about 200 people out there, so it was really nice. Conferences coming up, and our SUD workshop is coming up, as well as another training. Next slide, please. We have some of our provider events coming up with Community Housing Network, our neighbor here in the building, their event coming up this week, and we have a couple of us attending that event, as well as the NAMI Michigan Honors Night is coming up on Saturday. We have a number of individuals that have been nominated for that honor, both staff as well as some of our community partners. So looking forward to honoring them this Saturday. We have our Veterans Support Group for Men, as well as some additional training, some conferences coming up. Also want to mention really quick, the TARA Training, that Threat Evaluation Reporting Overview Training that's coming up on April the 18th. If you are able to attend, we would love for you to do so. It is on our website under the Training Resources, so if you're able to attend, it sounds like it's going to be a really wonderful training. Also have a Human Trafficking Training coming up on the 24th later this month. Next slide, please. More events. Like I said, it's a busy month, and it's looking to be busy as well in May. We have the Michigan Science for Autism Event coming up at the end of the month, and a number of staff attending that, as well as some additional trainings and workshops. And then I'm excited about our Annual Veterans Event that's coming up on May the 10th. We're going to host it here this year at our building here in Troy. We already have 30 vendors registered and over 125 people registered for the event, and we still have lots of time left, so we're looking forward to that. It's going to be a busy place here on that Saturday. Next slide, please. Just to let you know, some of the press releases that we have going out, we've already sent out a couple. Our Resource Fair, just a recap of it, as well as our Autism Awareness Light of the Blue. You're going to see some photos from that next up, as well as Alcohol Awareness and Underage Drinking Prevention Week. We'll be focusing in on that, as well as announcing our Crisis Director. And then our ongoing advertisement, I believe I shared that with you on Boardable in terms of seeing some of our billboards. I know a few people have seen some of our commercials that are already airing on Channel Four and Channel Seven, so thank you for approving that last month so that we could get our commercials out there. And then just some of our conference room usage is listed there as well. And the next slide just features our staff with their Light of the Blue last week. So we did a little awareness for Autism Awareness Month. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Good, busy time.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thanks. Okay. Item five, our second opportunity for public comments. Anyone from the public online?
If you are online and wish to speak for public comments, please raise your hand at this time.
Dennis, you can... Yeah?
As a member of the public.
As a member of the public, correct. Yes.
Chris, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Thanks. I'm just learning the rules, so I appreciate it. I look forward to meeting everybody next week. I'm so honored to be part of the board and apologize that my schedule didn't allow me to make it tonight. I just wanted to say, I thought all the board's comments regarding the survey were excellent, and I wholeheartedly agree with the desire to keep communication going early and throughout the process. I also want to reiterate the question about spend-downs. I saw, I know it was not scientifically accurate, but 17% on spend-down seems very high to me, and if it really is 17%, in my experience, over half the people I meet on spend-downs, there's usually creative ways to get around spend-downs, and I hope we continue to explore and be proactive in helping people get around spend-downs, and also continue to evaluate when people are not getting our services because of a spend-down, they're not getting into the door, in ways we can help achieve them from getting through. I'm sure there are all sorts of ways I'll learn about through my board membership of things we are doing, but I thought that was an excellent question and an excellent point, and certainly a... But I thought that was an excellent question and an excellent point and certainly a slide that, that, that popped out to me, um, too. So, um, thank you very much. And again, I look forward to meeting everybody next week.
Okay. Anybody else online? Sheila can, nope. All right. Anyone else in the room? Okay, if not, let's switch to item six, board member comments. Adam, we'll start with you.
Once again, thank you to all the staff that put together all the presentations tonight. Um, thank, um, thank you to Robert and Suzanne and especially, um, Frances and Tricia for the, um, Needs Assessment Overview. Very, um, very enlightening as usual. And yes, I would, um, echo the comments that, um, it will be nice to, um, collaborate regarding that in a future study session. So looking forward to it. Thanks and have a good night.
Thank you.
Alkaya?
Thank you to everyone that made their presentations tonight. It was, uh, very, uh, informational and there were a few surprises, but we'll get to the bottom of those as well. So thank you.
Okay. Dennis? Dr. Cameron. All right. Dr. Hans?
Thank you for the presentation, especially the Needs Assessment Survey. Um, it's getting better and we are analyzing it in a more meaningful way. So I congratulate the team. Thank you. But our work still continues. Thank you.
First of all, um, thanks for all the great work on behalf of the team that goes into the presentation. And secondly, I wanted to share with, um, some of you, um, stories that inspire, uh, we've had Hannah Ritchie come out and I know she's done some stuff at some of the workshops. Her parents, uh, John and Becky Ritchie, have written a book on autism. And as you know, this is Autism Recognition Month. But the, uh, actual signing of the book will be on Saturday, May fourth, at the Clarkston Library, between the hours of t, uh, ten and twelve. Uh, I asked if they had the price of the book yet. They don't have the price. It's still being worked on, um, with, um, the collaborators. So, um, if some of you can make it out that day, I do plan to go. So if people want to order books, they can do that, uh, through me because, um, they are the parents of two children with "awesome" as they call it. And that's the title of the book. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Could you repeat the time and date again?
The date is May fourth, um, at the Clarkston Public Library, between the hours of ten AM and noon.
Okay. Um, thanks to Trish and Carly for the survey. Um, but Alkaya, as, as always, you said something that really struck me and, and the crisis piece. So was Frances and Trish. You know, one of the challenges in having received this survey for my guys, um, I wish Dr. Giles was still here because, you know, you kind of get the buildup to the crisis and the crisis and then you move on from it. And if you get that survey too far after you, you've moved on, then it's like it's forgotten. So somehow, the, the way you phrased it, Alkaya got me thinking. It's like, we've got to measure along that spectrum or that continuum so that we get it on the buildup. You know, cause by the time you hit the crisis, if you survive that moment, then you kind of go, oh, okay, well, we got through it. Um, and I think there's a whole lot of up to the moment and then, you know, cause then it becomes, you, you go to the emergency room, you go to Haven, and it's like, you know, how do we avoid that? And then you move on and you forget about it, except it probably changed things forever. So, I mean, that's, that's the challenge with point in time surveys versus kind of this continuous process. So I'll leave that to you to figure out how we capture that. But it, it, you really got me thinking on that, you know, kind of that continuum or that spectrum of spectrum. So, thank you for a thought provoking comment. All right, with no further business, I will have us stand adjourned.